City Hall of Muscatine, Fran, will you please have a roll call?
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Matt Fig.
Present.
Posero.
Present.
Beinam.
Present.
Harvey. Spread.
Present.
Six present, one absent, your honor.
First on the agenda for discussion is a no parking issue on Sunset Drive and Sunset Circle. Brian?
Good evening, your honor. Last October, we came to you, the Traffic Committee brought forward a recommendation for Sunset Drive at Sunrise Circle for no parking. The request was for no parking on both sides of the street, in the red areas here. At that time during that discussion, council decided that we would temporarily place no parking sides on the north side of the street only to see how that had worked. Since that time, the, some of the neighbors in the area have come to the Traffic Committee and expressed their concerns that they don't think it's working properly, and they would like to see no parking on both sides of the street in the areas outlined in red there. The Traffic Committee debated that, and we, we think there's merit to that. We feel that sightlines would be improved with no parking on either side of the street. We think it would increase safety. I didn't, I invited all the property owners nearby to come and speak about it, because I know that there was some dissent from the owners on the south side. So what I wanted to do tonight, my intention was, is to present this before council, let the property owners have a chance to express their concerns and speak about it. Council can make a decision or not, and then based on that, I could either make a presentation and recommendation at next meeting, or if you guys want to decide that tonight, but I wanted to get it before council and let you hear what they have to say. So at that time, or at this time, unless there's any questions for me right now, I would invite anybody who wants to speak about it to come to the podium.
Just to be clear, what you're saying tonight is the Traffic Committee is recommending no parking on both sides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As a sightline issues.
Yes.
Basically. Although, there is a chance that it could increase speed by not having parking on both sides, so you may be trading, have a bit of trade off there.
There is a potential that if people can see through that corner all the way, they may speed up. The speed limit there is 25 miles an hour, so technically they should not.
Should not, but...
People drive how they choose to drive.
And is that, at that intersection, is that a stop sign or a yield sign?
There is a yield sign coming south on Sunrise Circle.
Also, I want to make sure that the council knows that that white area is a speed hump.
This area right here.
Trying to slow down the traffic.
Yes.
But that will be coming out.
I thought we did have more speed humps.
Those will be coming out.
Those will be removed for council's decision previously, that'll happen this summer. So, any other questions for me?
How long is that, real quick?
Pardon? The red lines are approximately 195 feet from the center line of the intersection, so this one we cut off because obviously there's no curb there. So from this point to this point, it's about 195 feet. This side here, it's probably about 180 feet, something like that, maybe 175 feet on both sides. Really, you can't park here anyway because of the way the corner's configured. There's a driveway here, so you couldn't park there. The main parts would be either, we either start it here, or we start it on this side of this driveway to prevent parking between these two driveways here and this point here on the curb, so that there's a clear sightline. If you're traveling west, you can see through there. If you're traveling, if you're traveling east, it's not quite the same issue, but carries me think on those curbs because it's offset so far, and it's just a...
So the homeowners that own those homes on those curves are okay with this?
Well, I'm not going to speak for the homeowners. I do know that at the October meeting, the residents that lived here were opposed to any change. And I know tonight, the residents that live here and here are with us, and I think would like to speak about, you know, their experiences here, so. But I will sit down.
Would one of you please state your name and your address and, right behind the podium?
My name is Jeff Schmidt. I live at 500 Sunrise Circle. In thinking through what I wanted to say, it really boils down to one thing, and it's a safety issue. It's not a convenience issue, it's not a slowdown traffic issue, it's a doggone safety issue. And it's not just for drivers. Off to the right on that screen is Grant School, and we have kids coming out of Grant School, walking down that street, they get to that intersection, and they off, you know, cut across the intersection. Drivers with parked cars there, drivers cannot see the kids crossing. Somebody's going to get killed or seriously injured. And that's not an exaggeration. Thank heavens, nothing serious has happened thus far. But now is the time to solve the issue that's been going on for, since October. And delaying it further isn't going to change the situation, it's not going to change the safety issue that it is. So from my perspective, I think there's a, you know, the Traffic Committee has recommended stops and no parking signs on both sides of the street. From my perspective, I would hope that tonight we can resolve this in favor of that recommendation. Any questions?
Yeah, just real quick.
Yes, sir.
That street and Grant School have been there a long time, and up until recently, we haven't heard much, so what's changed? Is there anything?
The change is a new residence, and on here, I don't know if it shows...
It's the one that Brian pointed out.
Is this one here?
Yes, sir. It's the one, yeah, 500 Sun...
Okay.
That is what has changed, and when that residence, when those folks moved in, and I've got pictures if you need them, cars were parked on that curve incessantly. Pickup trucks, I mean, just all kinds of vehicles. And to me, it's rather interesting, since the letter went out to the neighborhood for this meeting, there haven't been any cars parked there. Okay, so if that's the case, and you can park your car somewhere else, why object to putting a stop to parking on both sides?
And do you think, yeah, this is, I'm just asking for your opinion, but do you think instead of a yield sign, a stop sign on Sunrise Circle would help?
No, because you can stop, but if there's cars parked there, you have to wait to let clears out of there before you can actually make a turn. And I've seen that happen numerous times. I don't think that would make any difference, in my opinion, it's my opinion, I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for this gentleman?
Well, we've had no parking on the north side since whenever we did that, took that action.
Several months.
Well, initially, there were no parking signs opposite to where they are now, and for whatever reason, those were removed. Have no idea why, but now, then we went with no signs on either side, then no parking signs were where they are currently. Keep them there, but add no parking to the other side, and it will resolve the whole issue.
So there were some on the south side for a while.
Those are temporary ones, just as a trial.
I thought the trial was on the north side.
No, that was, that was pre, pre...
Oh, that was before the last trial.
Indeed, yes.
The other trial.
Pre-trial trial.
But I appreciate your listening, I wish I was better spoken, but the truth is, it is what it is, it's a safety issue, and I, if something happens and it's not resolved, the onus is on all of us for not having taken care of it, so amen to that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So do we have any police reports of accidents or anything? He's shaking his head, no. I personally don't see where the sightlines with no parking on the south side, I mean, having, having, having parking on the south side doesn't appear to me to have, be a problem with sightlines, because when you're coming up around the corner, you're supposed to stay on the right-hand side.
If cars are coming up that street, it is a problem.
From Mulberry?
If cars are, yes, if cars, if you're on Mulberry.
Correct.
Okay, cars going down that way.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a problem. Cars coming up that way, it's the same problem, just on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say something?
I'm Kathy Metcalf, I live at 507 Sunrise Circle. So I'm not right on Sunset, but I'm the next house in after you turn on Sunrise, and I'm on the left. And I was here in October to speak about this issue, so I really have the same thing to say, which is, it is a problem, the sight is, line is a problem. I've lived in my house 30 years, and it was only recently a problem. My children went to Grant School, and they went, when they walked home, they would walk on the south side of the street because it's unbroken sidewalk, in the sense that you don't have to cross another street. So they would get right to the, to the Sunrise corner, and that's where they cross. I now have a grandson going to Grant, I walk him, I escort him to make sure he's okay, and next year it'll be a grandson and a granddaughter, so my interest is across generations. So, coming off, as a driver, I've experienced this problem, coming off of Mulberry, turning right onto Sunset, when there are cars parked there, you cannot see. I don't know if you can't tell that from the map, but I think this could be resolved, maybe just with, you know, park some cars there and try it, and you'll see that you cannot see. So it's a safety issue, my grandchildren are okay, but I can, because I'm escorting them, and I'll do, you know, do that as long as I need to, but not everybody has that option. And when school gets out, and I see kids coming down that way, some of them are on bikes, some of them are on walk, they're walking, that's a popular spot to cross. And my concern is, I was here in October, so here we are now, it's summer. No, there haven't been any accidents that I'm aware of. Is that what we're waiting for, though? Are we waiting for an injury before we take care of this? Because I don't think that's the solution. So, I really don't have any further things to add, I just, I'm very concerned as a grandparent, as a citizen who pays taxes and would like my community to be safe and my street to be safe, and would like not to be sued because somebody gets hurt there someday, so that's where I am. Thank you.
My name's Don Frieden, I'm at 508 Sunset Drive, just beyond the curve. My main concern is, right in front of my house is a speed hump, the apparent speed hump, and it's been bad for, I don't know how many years, but what we've got there is a launching pad, no one hardly slows down there, and I'm real concerned with traffic going by my house. I have grandkids that are there every once in a while, and I don't want to see people going 40 miles an hour beyond my house. Either fix the speed hump, or get rid of it.
Well, the speed hump's coming out.
It is.
It is this year.
Well, it's first I've heard of it, but...
We've talked about taking out all the speed humps in town, and they're coming out this summer.
Whatever, but people use that for a racetrack.
So how do we slow them down?
How do we slow them down?
Yeah.
I thought we had the appropriate thing there, the speed hump, but a cop set a car there. There's cars that go by my house 40 miles an hour, and that's too fast.
Sometime next week, I've been told there will be a car there sitting, taking pictures.
That'd be wonderful.
Kelsey Brackett, 2017, Mulberry. I don't know if the mic's on, by the way. In the audience, at all? I was, I live up, up the street a ways from this, but I walk my dog in that area, and I absolutely attest to what they said about the sightline there, it's terrible. If there's, you know, because I've noticed that, because we walk that way sometimes, and if there's a car parked in that location, then you really can't see, if you're driving, you really can't see past it, and I have noticed more cars, you know, in recent months. But I also used that street quite a bit at different points in time when I was throughout, you know, working here in town, and off and on, there's been cars parked there, and it is, it's a terrible corner when there's a car parked there. You can't see around it, you got to swerve around it, and basically, you know, you're going into the other lane if your vehicle's wide at all, and there's a wide vehicle sitting there. So I just wanted to agree, you know, with them, that it's, it's definitely a safety issue there.
The problem is, you, you take parking off the street, you're going to increase speed.
Well, there is that, too, so I don't know what to say about the speed issue there, that's, you know, that, a steeper speed hump, or, you know, some, would be that, you know, I mean, I really don't know, because that is a bad spot, and I've, I've seen people, as he said, launch off of it, because it's such a subtle speed hump that, you know, they hit it and just keep on going. You know, you see sparks fly with the person in, you know, the car in front of you, that kind of thing, so. But if it's two cars in front of you, the car in front of you slows down real fast. But that's all I had to say, thanks.
Mr. Brackett, could I get your first name, please?
Kelsey, K-E-L-C-E-Y.
Further discussion at all from the council?
I'm not sure we can solve the speed problem tonight, but I think we can do something about the line of sight and safety issue.
There's no action item tonight, it'd be at the regular meeting, but if there's a consensus on bringing something forward next week...
I was just going by what Brian said.
If there's a consensus on bringing something forward, we'd bring that forward next week.
So was there a memo on what, why the park, or the parking committee, street committee decided to do to?
Traffic committee.
Or Traffic Committee, there you go.
Can't hear you, Phil.
Park, Parking Committee is Nancy, that's the...
No more, no more Parking Committees.
Nancy likes Parking Committee.
So could you repeat the question or rephrase it?
Well, I was just wondering what, what their rationale was for putting it on both sides.
For putting it on both sides. We, we met with, the residents came to our meeting, they explained their concerns to us, the committee agreed that we think that this is, reduces, or improves the sightlines, and it makes sense. So, and like I said, I didn't make a recommendation for this evening, I wanted the council to hear everybody and have a chance to discuss it. If there's consensus, I can put a memo together for next week, so.
Why has this taken eight months? Why has this taken eight months?
We did that, we did that.
Did we put an eight-month thing on it?
Yeah, yeah, we did a temporary thing, yeah.
I knew it was temporary, I didn't know we put it in.
Because we wanted to try it, see if it worked.
I don't think we specified eight months.
No, I don't think so either, but it's a good trial period.
I'd like to see the council vote on it next week.
Same here.
Consensus?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian. Next on the agenda is a sidewalk program update. Andrew?
I'm just going to give a brief overview of what we're proposing for the 2017 sidewalk program. Just, just as a real quick reminder, the sidewalk programs were, each year you've allocated some money for us to construct sidewalks in locations where there's gaps in the sidewalk network, and this will be staff's recommendation for what to do in 2017. So the map you got here kind of gives you an overview, the yellow lines are where existing sidewalks are, the blue lines is where last year's sidewalk is, and the pink line there, which is coming west from Madison School area, I'll show you more detail, is what we're recommending be constructed as part of the sidewalk program for 2017. Just real brief basis for, basis for this recommendation is, one of the areas that has the fewest sidewalks in town, there is around Madison School. In 2016, you can see in the blue, we addressed that issue a lot to the north and to the east of the school. So then, the objective this year was to address getting to it from the west, and secondary goal is providing safe pedestrian access to the Mad Creek Green Belt. Right now, if you want to use the Green Belt, the only way to really get to it safely is drive to it and park at one end, and then walk or bike it, and so by constructing this route here, then you'd be able to walk or bike safely to the Green Belt, which greatly increases its, the value of it. So this is a, more of a, this is a close-up of the particular route we're proposing. The main thing was to get from the Madison School area over to the Green Belt. The particular route was chosen, a lot of that was driven by the existing conditions on the ground, basically avoiding having to move utility poles, or construct retaining walls, or remove large trees, and so this is the viable route to make that connection. And then based, based on...
So you evaluated Lake Park?
What's that?
You evaluated using Lake Park?
We did look at Lake Park, the challenge with Lake Park is there's a, as, as, as the, there's a real slope as you get away from the curb, and that really drives up the construction costs. And so you, staff's recommendation is this is better bang for buck taking this route.
So this, the roadway in this area is all concrete? Existing concrete at this point? The roadway. Do we have curb gutter, concrete, is it just asphalt?
Good evening, the, so Brian and I were just involved in the conversation there because MacArthur is part of the asphalt overlay, so we were making notes about how we were going to coordinate that with asphalt overlay, but most of those streets that are there are asphalt. There's a lot of those streets that don't have curb.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So when you put in a sidewalk, does that mean we will put in curb and gutter?
No, that does not mean that. We can, we can take that, there, we've walked that area, and there are good locations that will drain and won't cause any problems. The best example I can give you is that little piece of pink that's on MacArthur there, that's on the far right. I mean, there's a super wide, existing right away there, so we can get that sidewalk in there and not mess up any of the ditch drainage that's there, and honestly, I think that's one of them that has, has a piece of curb, too, if I remember right. So, I mean, this, some of that does have curb and gutter, but some of it does not.
That's what we do in sidewalk on both sides of the street?
Nope, just on one side. This is just to get a sidewalk.
For school?
Within a block, or less than a half a block, so the kid has to walk less than a half a block to get to a sidewalk that would get him to the school, or her.
Is that five-foot wide sidewalk?
Yes.
Who is actually paying for the sidewalks?
We are.
The city would be out of, what, Road User Tax Fund, is that what funding that?
You know, the, number of years ago, the city started budgeting annually $100,000. After the first year, we received $50,000 from Wellmark Grant, and then the city began budgeting a sidewalk program annually, focusing on safe routes to schools, connectors, gaps, as our initial target for the sidewalk program.
We actually make, make some residents pay for the quote-unquote new sidewalks? Now we're giving a little bit of freebies?
Only for repairs and maintenance, and in the case of repairs, we'll take the sidewalk out, and the resident is required to put the sidewalk back in, so that's only replacement. And then we do a lot of new sidewalk, for example, with the CSO program, there's been a lot of new sidewalk installed, Mulberry, Colorado, all of those were part of the project itself. So, so no, that's a, that's more of a repair and maintenance issue, along with the sidewalk policy that was adopted a couple, a couple of years ago now? A year ago?
Thank you.
So the other thing is, is if you used the unit price per linear foot that we installed at last year, this would come in a little bit under budget, so what we're proposing is a bid alternate, if this one comes in similarly under budget, another small piece that we could do, and proposing this a bid alternate. This is over on Tangle Foot Drive, which is what connects Spinning Wheel Court to Hauser Street. This is about 200 foot of sidewalk that connects an entire neighborhood.
That's been necess, that, that serves a lot more people than what that other sidewalk that you're putting in.
Low-hanging fruit.
Makes any sense.
And so, yep, that's what we're proposing for, if we have a consensus tonight, that's what we'll move forward with as the 2017 sidewalk program.
Now, the Tangle Foot one, that's only sidewalk on one side?
Yep, looking at, on one side, on, be on the north side would be the...
Why not finish the south side?
You, looking at that, you'd probably have to move some utility poles, so that's why we're looking at the north side.
The reason that was not done previously was because that house that sits there, there's like, planted like five lots, and it wasn't developed, and so they left it alone. And the south side, there's, as you can see, there's, there's actually a couple more breaks in it that I don't believe are on there, because if you come around the corner from Spinning Wheel Court and try to take a right, there's a, there's a missing section, and then you go a little ways, and then there's another missing section, and then there's more sidewalk, and then there's no sidewalk from there to the corner. And the reason there's no sidewalk, and it was basically one property owner, was because on, when we did Hauser Street, and we put sidewalks on both sides, the person on the corner declared that they had a financial handicap because they were paying for the sidewalk across the front, and they didn't want to have the expense of paying for the sidewalk along the side also, even though they own a corner lot, and you're kind of responsible. But in this case, we're putting it in, they aren't. And now we're putting it in, but we're not putting it in on the correct side of the sidewalk, or the correct side of the roadway. Well, I think, yeah.
Just something to throw out there.
Matter of opinion.
Depending on how the, the asphalt work comes in at the end of June, you could always add a small section.
Yeah.
If those bids come in well.
And the other thing that Jim pointed out, if you think this one's a higher priority than the route heading west out of Madison School, we can rearrange things, so if this would get done, then what we can't, going west out of Madison.
Well, my only thing is, it's, you're, you're serving Madison School, and you're giving a group of children a chance to walk over there, but how many children are you actually serving in that area versus this, this neighborhood? And I don't know what the average age in that neighborhood is now.
There's a lot of kids there.
There's a lot of kids, and they're walking, they're walking to Mulberry School.
Are they?
Yeah.
You see a lot waiting at the bus, there's a bus stop right there at Tangle Foot and Hauser, and there's always a lot there in the morning, so, yeah.
I think, you know, they're, they're both good projects, the other one also gets you over to the trail, so, you know, hopefully the bids are, come in, we can see how they, the asphalt, the maintenance work comes in as well, maybe we can get, do a change order and get a little extra done as well.
Do you have any numbers, any, I don't know how you do that other than setting there, but numbers of people using Mad Creek Green Belt Trail?
Well, I can, like, we're about, ByState does conduct, they're about to do our annual count of trail users, I don't know if we've ever put a counter over on Mad Creek, but I think I can have them put one over there. I would guess it's not high, I mean, part of the reason is, is there's really no safe way to walk or bike to the Green Belt, and I think that's one of...
Well, and, and in the past years, Mad Creek's gone mad and washed out where the trail was. I mean, literally just washed a whole sections of it out.
I don't think it's one of our higher-used trails, but I mean, I think it does make sense to provide safe pedestrian access to it.
Well, let's see what we get for bids.
Yep. From the actual...
From, from the actual request that I think I made last year in regards to that Lake Park, the linear foot is, isn't it about the same of what you're wanting to propose?
Linear foot, the problem you get over on Lake, and I can bring up Street, is you have-
And the only reason why I say that is about safety-wise. I mean, I see more kids walking up and down Lake Park, driving, riding their bikes, skateboards, they don't have, they don't have a sidewalk. They ride it on the streets.
And the, the other, the other challenge we have on Lake Park, that, that, with the current bridge, there's no way to safely get a sidewalk across the current bridge on Lake Park.
But here, you're only doing it to the trail anyway.
Right, because-
If we just did it to the trail, I mean, I'm just, there's no sidewalks on Lake Park at all, is what I'm getting at.
And if you want, we can ta, take a look at it, but I think, you know, if that was what we initially looked at, but when you got out, looked at the-
I would like, I would like for you to be able to at least look at it, yes, and then be able to compare, that way we can say, okay, here is two-hundred thousand dollars, and then here is seventy-five thousand, whatever it is, so we can have at least an evaluation that we've looked at it. Because I think that, that's what I requested last year.
We can do it.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I know what you're talking about. You could, the same linear footage of sidewalk is probably going to be one and a half times because of the retaining walls and the grades and-
And if there is, then at least we can say that we've evaluated, and we know the cost for that.
Yeah.
But I, I know that that, that is going to be used a lot more if we put one on Lake Park than we would on that Summit Drive going back in through MacArthur.
So, so are we saying our consensus is that the priority is Tanglefoot?
In my opinion, it's Tanglefoot.
Because of the population and the, and the usage.
That, but I don't-
I don't know.
But I don't know what the usage, what the age group of the residents over along this other area either. I, I mean, I, I don't know. Now, the school district should be able, or somebody at Mad, I don't think Magic keeps that kind of information.
Well, Tanglefoot, you said it was two-hundred feet?
It, that piece of Tanglefoot's probably around three-hundred feet.
Yeah, it, the side you want to do is longer. Probably a hundred and fifty feet on the other side, just along that one residence roadway, and then a couple blanks, and you're done.
So, Santos, what gets more use, Lake Park or MacArthur?
Well, in my opinion, Lake Park does, but MacArthur's, I mean, obviously, there's just going to be those neighborhood residents, the people that are traveling through there. If you're riding a bike, if you're even on a, on a, on a trail and you want to get down there, they ride on the street. They're not going to cut back and say, oh, there's a sidewalk, so I'm going to come back through MacArthur and cut back through Summit. The only reason why they would is if they're worried about getting hit by a car.
Is, is Lake Park wide enough to add a, painted on-street bike lane for safety?
We could, we could certainly look at that.
You could add it, but I don't know about safety.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how wide it is, or whether you can safely add one or not. I mean, maybe it's something we haven't looked at. The reason that I walked up here was to just say real quick, some of these projects are, are fairly easily implementable, and we, we can do them in-house. When you start to deal with Lake Park, with some of the real differences in grade there along the edges, and then the other one is, help me, Andrew, what's the other one we looked at? Isaac. And I know that is one that has been mentioned before, but if we're going to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to do sidewalk, you're going to spend twelve just to get the design done. Because it's, it's something that's going to need to be surveyed, and there's going to need to be retaining walls and, and stuff like that designed and, and done. There's, there's significant, there are significant roadblocks to get sidewalks through those areas. So, part of this was, and Andrew and I had this discussion, it was like, okay, maybe we get one more year in here of the stuff that we can do without spending a lot of money, or a big portion of the hundred thousand, without doing a design, and kind of pick the last little bit of the low-hanging fruit. So, if, and maybe what we've done is, maybe we've pushed the low-hanging fruit too much, but that sort of guidance from you guys is what we're here tonight to get, is if you want us to be going different routes with it, we'll look into it.
I just want to get a cost estimate, and then we can sit here and say, if it's so much, then I'm good with going with the low-hanging fruit.
So, so what, what do you want to see the cost estimate on?
I want to know what is-
You want to go from Second Avenue all the way down Lake Park, across the bridge and into Isaac?
I want to go, I want to at least go to the trail, at least. I mean, if he's concerned about the bridge, because we don't have a design for that, I would like to go from what's existing on Second over by Hy-Vee, all the way down to the trail. Because at least there's, and, you know, if you don't want to build some, an extension onto the bridge, or we want to do something, that's fine, but at least I have an estimate to say, yes, you're right, I agree with you, Jim, there probably is retaining walls, but if there's a striped line, if there's something we can do now, because right now, there's kids that ride that every day.
And we, we can, we can do those estimates between Andrew and I. The only condition that I'll put on that is that it's just going to be based on the information that we've done with the stuff that's fairly easy to do, and it's just going to be a-
Kind of a ballpark.
Order of magnitude ballpark cost estimate on it, because to, to really know what that's going to cost, you need to design it and figure out where the retaining walls go, et cetera, et cetera. It's the only condition I wanted to put on it. Thank you, guys.
Counsel, at this time, what's your recommendation? Or consensus?
I'm good with a proven Tanglefoot.
Yeah, I think we should do something on Tanglewood.
And see, and I, and, and I'm one that will vote no if we're not putting sidewalks on both sides, because I think it's important that they're on both sides of the roadway. Tanglefoot, I can buy the argument that the other side's not developed fully. There's five undeveloped lots that are, that are platted. They were, the one was sold, but there's a border of trees around that big old house, and the deed abstract, some, some paperwork there said that when the trees are dead, you can take them out. If they're not dead, you can't remove them. And so, the guy had the, he, I don't know whether he still owns a lot or not, but he bought the lot, and it's basically ninety percent trees. And so, he couldn't take them out, so he couldn't build his house. So, that section, to me, if we put sidewalk on one side, it's justifiable not to do the other side because it is undeveloped. But most of the other areas that you're talking about here, there's, there's people on both sides, it's developed all the way across. As far as I'm concerned, it needs sidewalk on both sides.
Well, I think if we can agree on just doing this one side for now, and then evaluating that next year as we can see those homes, we're good with that, but at least we, we get-
Maybe even this year is what Greg's saying.
Well, you're not, I mean, you're not going to be able to do both projects on, on both sides of the street with the dollars that we have. I mean, we simply can't do it.
Right.
But you, you can get the connection to the school and the trail done this year on, on one side, and get this piece done as well, hopefully, based on the bids that come in.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's even two proposals.
Consensus for that?
Do part this year and part next year?
So, what I just heard? On Tanglewood?
Bring this forward this year, and then we can evaluate if we want, and, oh, Tanglefoot? Wait, you could also look at the, I, I thought you were referring to the-
I'm, I'm saying on Tanglefoot, we could do one side, but let's do the, the other side, not, not the side that's undeveloped, that has undeveloped lots. I can buy that reasoning. But I can't, if, if there's, you know, if, if there's houses on both sides, I, I say we need to do both. In this particular case, we need to do one side, and it would cut down the amount of concrete we would need to put in. We could go back to this other area that you're talking about, you've already identified, do one side for now, and come back and-
Well, Andrew's saying that we've got to move utility poles if we do it where you want to put it.
Or go around the utility pole.
I don't think there, I mean, I think, because, because when we sat down and looked at it initially, had the same logic, that you're laying forward that the south side made more sense, but then when you looked at the available right-of-way, and where the utility poles were, that, that, that's why we moved over to the north, to pull it over.
What if you buried the utilities? Just asking.
That solves the problem.
Yeah. Anybody know anybody in MPW? Yeah. Okay. Is it?
No, it's more what's coming along, and we can pull, if, if, we can pull up Google, if we're really interested, we can pull up Google Street View real fast.
Oh, that's, that's a nice view of the golf course, clubhouse.
While he's doing that, Jim, don't get up.
Building that.
Does Iowa State have any summer intern program that could design that sidewalk and retaining walls?
No, I don't think so. I don't think Iowa would have such things, but sort of, there are stats.
Yeah, the University of Iowa has an engineering school.
The, the biggest-
If you want the good one, you go to Iowa State.
Biggest problem there is not so much just laying it out, you know, but, but doing the surveys, you know exactly what you have to do, where the retaining walls and stuff have to go, and then the design goes with the retaining walls. That's the biggest problem.
But you're, you're talking a few homes, not the whole sidewalk's going to need retaining walls.
But I mean, you're going to need a hundred thousand dollars, and then this sounds bad, but we just, we just talk about, yeah, I mean, you're going to do a block.
It's, there's a pedestal.
Is there, and that tree would, you-
Well, and when we, we put a crossing over there, since there was sidewalk on one side, and everybody seems to stand out in the middle of, on that, that, where that sign is, where the island is, we put the crosswalk from the island across the street, rather than holding it to one side.
Right, yeah, that's in the dead center.
Across half at a time.
Yeah. So, anyway.
So, that utility box, is that in the way?
Yes, that's in the way. That and this tree right here, that's what it was.
But if you go to the other side of Mulber, or Hauser Street, when we put, when we did the improvements along Hauser, if you do an aerial view along the cemetery, we, we came down and we moved the sidewalk around the utility poles and-
You could, you'd, you'd have to, you'd have to get an easement from the property owner, because I think there's only about nine-foot of right-of-way right there, as, as I recall.
Yeah.
So, there's less right-of-way than, Hauser, you had a little more right, you can, you can see there where it wiggles, like you're talking about, and we have more right, we had a little more right-of-way to work with there.
Phil, if we got it in on the north side this year, at least it improved things for, I mean, people can-
I think we should, I think we should move with the, just doing the north side, like we're talking.
We, we could also bring you back an estimate, a cost estimate for each side, and what that would entail, and let you decide when, because you'll obviously have to prove final plans and facts, and give you, you know, a more detailed rundown of each option, then-
Getting an easement from, from her may be a problem too.
I'm good.
Further discretion at all? Consensus?
Not yet.
Yeah, you're bringing, going to bring back some-
To do what?
Some dollar amounts.
Well, I mean, they're going to give us estimates, but right now, we're probably going to agree with what staff's recommending. I'm just, I'm just requesting to want to have information on cost for Lake Park.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Thanks, Andrew.
Sorry to complicate your life.
Aren't you glad you came tonight, Andrew?
Just nod your head.
Yeah, say yes, thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is the Magic update.
And this guy is Mark Warren.
Yes.
A long-time head.
Warren, the GIS manager for Magic. Magic being an acronym for the Muscatine Area Geographic Information Consortium. We have three principal partners, one of them is the city of Muscatine, the other two are Muscatine County and Muscatine Power and Water. So, in brief, our, our mission, Magic's mission is to, I'm trying to get around here a little bit, Magic's mission is to provide improved efficiencies of local government, and effectiveness of local government through the use of digital mapping like we're seeing a lot of tonight, and, and GIS technology. So, I want to thank the city for inviting us to come down tonight and speak a little bit, and give you an example of one recent application that we've developed for the city, to kind of help out with some of this construction work that's being done this summer. Go to the city's main webpage here.
Not, not to the level we do it.
About, in early April, we were contacted by Steve Dalby, so Steve Dalby is now one of the inspectors for the city on all these different construction projects, and, and anyhow, he wanted to know, he wanted to be more proactive on trying to get information out on all the different road closures that there were going to be in the city over the next few months. And he was hoping that Magic could in some way maybe help make this more effective and more useful for local citizens. So, anyhow, he contacted us, and we had, held a meeting with Steve and Brian Steinman, the Public Works Director was there, also Tammy King from the Public Works Department was there. And I give a little shout-out to Tammy. She had done some research on her own, looking for possible GIS applications regarding road closures. So, she had a couple examples that she showed us, and Mark Yarrington, who is the other GIS person, took a look at those, and with those, we were able to pretty quickly put something together for the city. So, if you come down on the main page here, right here, we have a road closed section, and at the bottom of this, it says, click this link for an interactive map displaying construction projects and alternate routes. So, if you click on that, then you get this map right here. I don't know how, how many of you have seen this, but it's available on the webpage right, on the city's webpage right now. Nice thing about this, it's an interactive map, you can zoom in and kind of see where the road closures are going to be. You can drag your map around, look at all kinds of things. But, so, Mark put this together pretty quickly, he put it together in probably a day, nor less. It's fairly simple, simple what we're trying to do here. And the nice, the other nice thing about it is the way Magic is set up right now. Our servers are, our GIS servers are out at Muscatine Power in the server room out there, but, you know, we could take advantage of MPW's fiber optic wide-area network they have here in town. And so, people down over at Public Works, we have Connie Mann and both, and she and Tammy King will both be set up, or they are set up right now, so they can actually edit this and update it. So, whenever we know there's going to be a, a new road closure, we can set it up, we have, we can have an effective date on it so that the day that, that that construction project starts, this map will change based on that. So, so they can go ahead and get the work done beforehand, and again, with that, by putting that date in there, it automatically comes on when the project starts. So, anyhow, so that's just a kind of a quick way. You can see we have a, we have a truck route around, using the bypass around town. These green lines here around the city, those, those are your alternate routes. There's a little legend up here that you can just display this stuff with. And, and then if you click on these points, the, the little red points are the beginning any points of a, any given section, and, huh, typical. So, for some reason, those aren't displaying right now. Oh, that's right, never, excuse me. In our case, the red points don't display, it's only the line work that displays, so. Anyhow, so, yeah, so here's some information on when the road closures, you know, what the extent of it is, some additional information on phase one, and, and we give some dates. We even have Jim Adjeman's phone number in there. Do you have any props?
Take that out. Got his home number too, I hope.
I think Jim requested that.
That'll teach you.
Yeah, and then, and then we also, we also show who's the last person to update. So, in this case, it was Connie, so if you have any complaints, you can call her too. So, that's, like I said, that's a relatively simple way to do it, but it's effective for, you know, citizens to look and see what's going on downtown, and where, where can we not drive right now? So, so I think that was, that was a good little project that we had. And then, it's kind of a, a backup to this, so one of the questions was, well, what about people coming in from out of town, and, you know, they may not know about the city's website and everything? So, this, the manuf, the, the company that makes our GIS software, they've been promoting a, a, a mobile app out there called Waze, and that's something that we took a look at as well. And so, so anyhow, it's called Waze. Waze, originally, it was a company, an independent company, and that eventually, within the last year, I think, has been bought out by Google, so it's- So it's actually a Google application now, but they've maintained their independence. But nevertheless, so so what we have, because we have a server out here at Power and Water where we keep all this information, what we can do with, uh, Waze, and they have a program called the Connected Citizens Program that we just registered with, um, just a couple of weeks ago. Kevin Jensen, uh, worked with us on that, and he's the one also putting the links in the in the homepage. But, um, anyhow, so we got the city of Muscatine registered as a connected citizen partner with Waze. And what this means is then we can actually, the city can, whenever there's road closure information, uh, we can go ahead and just feed that to this Waze site, and it's pretty much automatic. So so those red points that you saw on the other map, well, here they are here on this Waze map. And again, it it, um, and I hear you do get some additional information here. And you'll notice that this was reported by the city of Muscatine. So we're a municipal partner in this Connected Citizens Program. These dots over here were put there by Iowa DOT. So Iowa DOT was the first Waze partner in the state. And City of Muscatine was the second Waze partner. So right now, there's only two Waze partners. Uh, what was interesting, when they first got us set up, they actually made us the owner of the DOT site, which was really tempting. We could have wreaked havoc with DOT, but but, you know, we contacted them, let them know that we don't think it should be set up that way. So so they did, they changed things. And so now the city has its own account and so.
Be kind of like the governor out east, right?
Pardon?
Be kind of like the governor out east, control of the bridge. Interesting.
So, uh, so the nice thing, it's, and again, these are, there's a lot of technology behind the scenes, but the actual application's relatively simple. Um, and so people who are on smartphones and stuff, a lot of people use ways, a lot of younger people use ways. And, uh, so it's a quick way for somebody coming into town to see that we've got some road closures, things they should be looking at if they come into town and try to drive around. So so again, I I think these are a couple of examples of how we're always working to try to, you know, promote this increased efficiency and effectiveness of our local partners, so.
And D two routes will be added, uh, to the site as well, right?
Well, for the ways right now, they only take point information. So so that's the advantage of our own local website is that, uh, we can, we can display a lot more information than they can.
Not so smart.
That's just a big advantage of magic servers out here is we have a lot of room for customization, more so than a can, a more of a canned web package like Waze, so. Any questions?
Just a comment, Mark. I mean, you mentioned that we're the second one on this application, but I think Musk, uh, Muscatine's magic has been ahead of a lot of other parts of the state in a lot of other aspects of GIS. And people that haven't been on the committee, uh,
Didn't, no.
Wouldn't necessarily know that, and you're not the type to brag too much.
We have our fingers in a lot of pies, you know.
But you're doing very well.
Yeah, so.
And magic is more than just going to Google Maps.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other applications. I mean, utilities, you name it.
Yeah, and actually, we may, we may be buying some, some of Google's imagery here in the near future. But but just one more way that we can customize what we're doing here locally, so.
And we'd be doing that because it could save the three partners money.
Yeah, save money.
That's what the whole project was set up initially was to try to save three entities money.
Pulling those resources, we've really been able to get a much better product than any one of the partners could have been able to do by themselves, you know, or on their own, so.
And been around for what, fifteen or seventeen?
Well, start, well, Phil's a charter member of magic, by the way, yeah, so.
I don't know how long it's been.
Two thousand. I think you, that's when it started. I I started shortly after that, but, yeah. And Scott's our current chair and Phil's one of the board members, for those of you may not know that.
Don't want him.
Excellent.
Okay.
Great new, great new tools.
Yes, right?
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Say hi to the other Mark.
I will.
Next, we we'd like to have a presentation on the, on the WP CP proposed in street C N G bus grant application.
Good evening. Um, I'm not water pollution control, but I'm transit. And we are a part of this grant, and John prepared the memo tonight proposing our applicate, application for a low no emission um, program grant from FTA, which is federal transit money. Um, and it would be a really super exciting opportunity for us to gain a slow fill C N G station, um, have our vehicle maintenance shop upgraded to be able to work on C N J, C N G vehicles, have our mechanics trained to work on C N G vehicles, and, um, last but not least, gain six C N G buses. So you know, we've talked for the, about this for four or five years, and the initial quotes that we got on buses were eighty thousand dollars more than a standard bus. That number now has gone down to twenty thousand dollars more than a standard bus. Um, so it's, it really is a small investment from a transit, transit perspective um, to bring us into gain great savings in the future. So you can see on your memo that, um, we budgeted, um, a hundred and eight thousand dollars would be the city's share for the six buses. Do the math, that's eighteen thousand bucks a bus. Um, and again, when we, when we started, that would have, you know, we never would have been attainable at that level. So new buses are coming soon, um, three new gas buses, the end of the month or the beginning of July. They're about eighty nine thousand dollars each. So if we add twenty thousand to that, um, for a C N G option, we're talking about a hundred and nine thousand dollars a bus. So a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's estimated in this grant is a generous, doable option. The advantage, um, quickly, we've talked about this before, but clean burning fuel. Um, the excitement for me is no more EGR valves, no more diesel engines, no more EGR coolers, no more replacement of diesel engines, which have been big chunks taken out of our budget every year, um, for the last ten years. Mileage is the same on a C N G vehicle. So if we get nine to twelve miles a gallon, um, on a bus now, we're still gonna get nine to twelve gallons, um, on a C N G vehicle. That wouldn't change. Um, John will talk about initially, we won't be using his gas, but we'll be purchasing off the grid. So I checked to see what Moline was paying, um, and for the last four months, they've paid anywhere from seventy five cents to ninety six cents a gallon was the high in the last four months. We're currently paying about a dollar fifty five, I think, for gas and a dollar sixty five for diesel. Um, so we're gonna cut our fuel cost. Not only are we gonna have cleaner burning, burning fuel, but we're cutting our fuel cost. Um, one area, we might see an increase in expense. We might be able to figure a way around to work around this, but we would have our buses parked at water. Those six C N G buses would then live at water pollution control plant. At the end of the day, they would go there because we're talking about slow fuel. So they would fuel, um, overnight, so they'd be parked, um, in a carport kind of thing, a bus port, if you will. So half our fleet would be there, half our fleet would be at Public Works. We have one service person. Um, we still need the buses cleaned, washed, fluids checked, those type of things. So we might have a slight staff increase. Um, that's it. The big gas savings. Um, my concern was service. I have had lots of conversations with Randy Moeller over the past couple of years, the vehicle maintenance supervisor. He's totally on board. He and John went to visit Metro Link. Um, Rock Island and Moline run all their buses on C N G. Um, they provide service for all their own vehicles. They used to service other people's C N G vehicles, but they're too busy now doing all the city fleet stuff they no longer do. They're our private entities. And again, as I mentioned, we'd have our own mechanics trained, um, to be able to service them.
Is the school district using C N G on the buses?
Propane. The school district went to propane.
Okay. So we budgeted the hundred and eight for the six buses.
This is not a budget.
Pardon me?
This is not a budget. This would come out of the, uh, the transit fund balance, which is about three, three fifty.
Right.
Three forty eight at this point in time. So this is, this is a grant that came, kind of came out of the blue. This is a standalone project from what, from what John is doing now. It enhances, um, should the council agree to move forward with, with the next phase at the water pollution control plant, you've got a slow fuel station that can be turned in, uh, and facilities down there that could, that, uh, could work with, with the the next phases at the water pollution control plant. So this is really a standalone opportunity that that's come up for six buses, fueling, et cetera. Uh, and we would take that out of the transit fund balance, the hundred and forty nine, two fifty, out of the three hundred and forty eight thousand fund balance that we have.
All right. Plus, Christie, you said that this grant might not be available in the future, or may not.
We don't know. We, who knows? Who knows if they'll offer it again? It's been around three or four years. It's fifty five million dollars that's being offered now nationally. Um, they like small projects. We're a small project, so hopefully Arizona doesn't grab up forty five million. I think they're, they're looking at, you know, smaller, smaller communities, smaller projects, smaller dollar amounts. So it's an opportunity for us to get our toes in the water.
Is there anything at all that that we need to think out of the box about maintenance? Any gelling, any, any fuel related situations?
Not that I've read about. Not that I've read about. Moline has done it, you know, Metro Link has done it for fifteen years. There used to be issues, um, with storage and, I mean, there's still combustibility issues, but, um, a lot safer than it was twenty, thirty years ago, that type of thing.
Christie, you also mentioned lifespan, current gas or diesel vehicles versus C N G.
Right. We should gain a few years of lifespan. Um, now we operate our buses essentially ten, eleven years. Um, and these we should gain, you know, two years, maybe even three years longer because it burns so clean. You know, we'll still have body issues. We'll still have frame issues. We'll still have tire issues and lights and all those, air conditioning, all those types of things, but we eliminate engine, costly engine repair.
Is there a reason why it's a slow fill? I'm not too well educated on.
I'm gonna let John answer that question. That's really his expertise, why we're doing slow fill and. Great, thanks.
Yeah, we can go with the fast fill station. They're just much more expensive. Um, and the slow fills are kind of nice just to, to have some of these kind of stationary places or stationary vehicles ready to go overnight, just kind of let them fill up. You don't have to worry about it. But the the costs go up exponentially when you go fast fill. So can you do all six at the same time? Absolutely. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'd, we'd have, we'd, 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 uh, set it up so they would all park down there at the same time. Uh, bus driver's done for the day, pulls up, plugs in, goes home. Comes in the next day, undoes their thing and and off they go. And they'll have plenty of fuel for the day. Plenty of fuel for the day, so.
So when you say slow fill, is that four hours, eight hours?
Yeah, they say six to ten, but I mean, that depends on the size of the tank and how full you really need to get it. And I think we were going two hundred and fifty, uh, but you only need about a hundred generally to get around. We'll have to look at compression issues and 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 volume of lines and different things down at that, at our end of the, of the world down there. But I know that coming into the treatment plant is a really big line. So we're, we're gonna talk to a line about that, see how big that is and what kind of volumes we can get out of it. That has a lot to do with how fast you're gonna fill these, is what you have down there. But we're not talking a little, I mean, this is not a little residential line. I mean, that was a big, I think it's a big two inch line coming into the plant down there, so we have a lot of capacity. Realistically, how far away would we be from fueling these with our own gas? Well, that's the next part of this. Uh, we, we are hopefully coming in, uh, with, uh, with the numbers for you next week. I've, I'll, I'll have some, something, a memo or something to bring. I don't know if I'll be able to bring it to council. I don't know if that would really be appropriate to show anybody, you know, at a meeting like that, but hopefully I will. Um, um, they, they seem to think we're, we're pretty much on target. And I know, knowing a little bit about how these things go, there's always something we could find that we could deal, deal with. It's, it's mainly the, the, the project of, of getting the station built to bring in the new material and then doing the gas cleaning, that's what we don't have, we don't have money to do that right now. There isn't money to do that second phase. We'll be, we'll be, well, there is, but I don't want to spend it on that. And that's, that's plant. That's for something, in case something happens to the plant, I'm not gonna spend that down. Nancy probably won't let me anyway. But hopefully, you know, I, I would say with the tipping fees that we're really looking at, I mean, we already have people coming in. We already have, you know, several big manufacturers want to contract with us. It doesn't mean they're guaranteeing us material, but they're excited enough that they want to bring stuff and they're already bringing stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming the tipping fees on this thing and we'll, we'll be able to build that to a comfortable level to where we can go on to phase two and start using the gas ourselves for our own, our own purposes. And really, I think when they, when they talk about partnerships, that's the big thing that the grant is really asking for. They want, they want to see the cooperative work you do, the partnerships you're building to bring this in, so it's not just the transit. So, you know, working with, uh, with us at the, the water reclamation facility, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna start calling it that. You better just get used to it. And the transit, um, and we can go on and on. We can go on to the partners, the people who are bringing us material, you know, the schools. We can kind of, we'll, we'll get a lot of letters together to send, you know, to this grant and say, hey, you know, here's, here's a whole slew of people we're working with, not just locally, but regionally even, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna be part of that project, so.
There's a pretty quick turnaround on this grant, so you'll be seeing, uh, if, unless council object, you'll be seeing a, a, a letter of support to at next week's council meeting, um, unless there's an objection.
Yeah, I would, this, this, basically what we're doing here tonight is we're, I'm, uh, there's a, we need to have a resolution from council saying, yes, we understand that there's a match to this grant, that we are willing to, to propose that, to, um, support this with the funds. There's a couple of things that it'll say the grant is gonna require. I just want to let you guys all know that. Give you the opportunity to ask questions about it before we spring it on you next week. Um, but this isn't being sprung on you, obviously. We've been, we have been talking about this for a long time. And really, with the way things are going now, the, the amount of funding, the ninety percent, you know, the eighty five to ninety percent of this thing will be paid for, which is pretty cool. Doesn't mean we'll get it, but, you know, can't say we didn't try if we don't, we don't put it in, so, you know. Just, just more, more of the same, you know, what, what do we want, what do, what do we want Muscatine to say when people see, think about us and see us, you know? That's really what this is. Um, you know, I know we're doing things with new logos and new taglines or whatever else like that. Those are all very nice. But when you want to see a project that does something, that puts your name on the map, um, once again, there is, there is, you will be hard pressed to find anybody in the Midwest doing this anywhere. So this is pretty, pretty cool.
And John, one more you find out about the grant, please?
Uh, it's, it, everything moves in from the coast.
Okay.
California, New York, Massachusetts, they're all doing it. And, and, you know, Calif, Colorado's got a couple now, and then there's a few places kind of starting to sprinkle around doing it. I mean, a lot of places run C N G. Very few run R N G, a renewable natural gas made from the, the waste of the, of the community powering the vehicles that are in the community.
When will they award the grants, please?
Uh, awarding probably comes sometime in September, I would imagine.
This year?
Yeah, so, something like that.
That's.
We have twelve months to obligate the funds, meaning we gotta get everything set up, but then we don't really, we don't have to have completion for two years after that. So honestly, as long as we get things kind of rolling within twelve months and we promise to get things rolling in twelve months, that earns us more points. Um, we don't have to do the grant, you know, we don't have to obligate any of the other money, even though we have it for, for, for quite a while, so.
Thank you.
Well, Christie said our size is to our advantage. Now you're saying the fact that it's coupled with the renewable, that's another factor that increases our chances.
Yeah, I think, I think there's quite a few things that are gonna really, uh, keep us in the running, you know. Everybody's thinking, oh, you're just a little thing. Well, I mean, it's specifically states in the grant, we're looking to give more grants out than just give out big grants. We would like to do more projects rather than a couple of really big ones, so. And talking to the, to the Iowa Economic Development people, you know, they said they had a hard time getting, you know, getting the, the grant off the website, which I'm thinking people weren't, weren't getting it anyway. But, but they said, you know, that people don't do this with R N G. This is not something they see all the time. They see a lot of people doing C N G, but not R N G. So that'll make us one more step ahead where that renewable factor comes in.
Bring it on.
Further discussion at all for John?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a consensus?
Looks like it.
Next topic, the, the. Next topic that, that we'd like to be talking about is a port study. Gentlemen?
Thank you, counsel. John, that's a compelling story, is what you're saying, and that, that's what sells. What I'm here tonight for is the community development director, is one of the ideas that gestated.
It's on.
Get closer to the level, or raise it.
Like the old comedian, like the old comedians, and does this thing on?
Got an extension on that thing.
An idea that gestated back when I first got here, I'm just shy of three years being here, and having done the research, discovered that what we're about to learn tonight is approximately a year's worth of work, and also that it's not, this is, there is no tax, local taxpayer money paid for this report, it's a hundred thousand dollar report, so it's a combination of our public-private venture with Kent Corporation. They put in about twenty, and the state put in about eighty thousand. Other than my time and our time, I did work with staff, Andrew, Jim, and Brian, on our side of the coin, but HDR, which is, we, we've also used them in our Mississippi Drive Porter project, one of their larger and stronger areas is port development. And so through a series and exhaustive measure of RFQs, we were able to choose them, we had two world-class companies that came to the table out of the, the several that we we got responses from, and that, I think we chose the right one. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna hand this over to, this presentation over to Kevin Keller, who's the vice president of HDR, and he'll go over it. Last week, I handed out individually to all of you your, your homework for this week, which was the feasibility study itself. It's been put up online, there's been a press release we're given, so that all of the public can see what it is we, we did. This was primarily done by the end of March. We've spent about six to eight weeks confirming the assumptions made and the numbers, so that what we're giving you is a pretty confident set of study, a study that you can really sink your teeth into. So other than questions, I'm gonna hand it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, your honor, counsel. It's a pleasure being here with you. Like Mr. Govan said, I'm Kevin Keller. I am gonna give you an abbreviated version of a presentation that we've given on our planning a feasibility study. I also was the project manager for the Iowa State Department of Transportation, State Freight Plan, State Rail Plan. And the idea for this actually was brought up in several freight advisory committee meetings while we were working on those two statewide plans. So thanks to some of the people in this room, you got statewide attention, and I'll, and I'll tell you in a minute why that's important. One of the things that we did was identify a purpose and a need for such a facility at this part of the country. You know, one of the US DOT's maritime administration's big efforts and initiatives right now is making better use of our inland waterway system. And one of the things maritime administration has is a program called the Marine Highway System. The Marine Highway System really was meant to mimic the interstate highway system, if you will. The Mississippi River from Minnesota down to Memphis has been labeled the M-55, right? Equivalent to I-55? Right, we, okay. We try to be clever sometimes, and I spend way too much time in DC. But what Dave Govan was, was, was telling about was what we call a LIFES grant with Iowa State DOT, a linking Iowa's freight transportation system grants. That was where, it's an eighty-twenty match. Again, no local tax money was used in this, twenty percent match money, twenty thousand dollars was provided by Kent Corporation, eighty thousand dollars was provided by Iowa DOT. And it was one of the few projects that were selected for this grant. So I think that's something important to point out. So again, I'm gonna give a real Reader's Digest condensed version of this, but, you know, when we looked at project benefits, we looked at things like, you know, how would a project like this improve the region? Not just local, but regional shippers and users of this facility? How would this project improve the capacity of not just a local freight network, but a regional, even national freight network? How would this project preserve and create new jobs here in Muscatine and in the county? How would we provide cost savings for shippers to enhance transportation on the river in this locale? So some of those project benefits like that were very important. So one of the things we did was look at what kind of characteristics this facility like this have in common, right, to be successful? What site could be a viable location for a facility like this? And always, what's the cost? So we looked at several, several aspects of this, of this, of this facility here. We did find a lot of benefits, as I just stated. You know, several benefits where we were lower or stabilized transportation costs for the, for the many shippers in this area by using not only road transportation via truck, not just by rail transportation, but now by adding that third modal component, river. Now, when you start looking at those three modes combined, that multimodal part of shipping goods both in and out of the, of the region, that's pretty strong. Not many sites can have all three of those modes, right? Big, big benefit to this region here. The other one I'd highlight is, again, it's, it's gonna leverage past investments in the river that we've had, you know? Obviously levy construction is always a big concern here, working with the Corps of Engineers, as you guys here in Muscatine know, but also future investments in the river. You know, if we really have an industrial kind of a facility here, that's just gonna leverage future investments and attract more growth to the area. More jobs, more income, more development, more economic development potential to the area. That's really what we're looking at. So with just some of those sites, we, we've looked at a site south, you can see it highlighted there, south of downtown. It's currently owned by Kent Corporation, so we don't have any ownership issues there. Kent's a hundred percent on board with this. It's about a hundred acres, it's in the, within the county, it has road access and rail access already, it's got utility access already, river access obviously is right there, and there's also an existing industrial base. It's relatively flat upland, so storage of containers is no problem. We could have drainage areas, we could have storage areas, future structures like warehousing, it's all amenable at this site. The other thing is it's deep water, so we can service what we call the big barges that have a, a deeper draft than other parts in the river can, which is a huge competitive advantage for Muscatine. And of course, you have road and rail access as well as just the riverfront access. Again, you know, the powerful thing on this, when we look at these studies is, is how can you add or even divert freight from trucking to cheaper modes? We all know trucking is pretty expensive, it's having a hard time attracting drivers. If we can get a cheaper, more safe, more efficient, environmental efficient mode of transportation, why wouldn't we do that? So that's what we look at when we do these studies as well. You can't see that, but you've all, I know, have memorized the study by now that, that Dave had provided you with, right?
Totally had it.
Exactly. So on page forty-eight, I don't know what page it is, but, but you'll see a site layout. And what we've done is we tried to really put into a site plan all those features you need in a diversified freight shipping area like this. Well, it's dry bulk, liquid bulk, warehousing, storage areas, all the railroad access, the road improvement access, and more importantly, the river, the riverside features that we'll need. So we've looked at all that, and we looked at the site improvements, we looked at the operations, we looked at the components. One of the things that we really scrubbed in this report, and I, and I hope you look at the governance section of this, because that's what really influences, I, I think y'all on, on the council, is what's the governance structure of such a facility, right? It really depends on the ownership. Obviously, this is a perfect example of a public-private partnership, right? We have the public entity, as in the city, the county, the state. We have the private entity, as in Kent Corporation. Canadian Pacific Railroad is very interested in being a partner in this. There's probably some other private partners that, that, that this will attract also. But what's that ownership look like? And what we've, we've come down to is the establishment of, I'm just calling it a port zone. I'm not gonna call it a port district, a port authority at this stage, but a port zone. What that port zone does is several very important things for, for the city. Number one, it allows the city to be an eligible applicant for state and federal grant applications, like we just talked about, the FTA grants, right? US DOT has several grant programs, as, as you all know. To be an eligible applicant, you have to be a state DOT, usually for US DOT grants, or a regional planning authority, or an MPO, or a port authority, or something like that. So we're gonna call it a port zone. So again, it's part of that P3 arrangements. What that means is even though you're the eligible applicant, usually you, you need matching funds, like we've talked about tonight, that can be provided by your public, by your private partners. That's what that zoning gives you, okay? So it's very important that, that, that it is like that. We talked about several revenue generation activities, and that's, that's the, one of the nice, the, the nice features of, of a business that's multimodal. You can get a lot of add-on revenue by doing several different activities at once. It's a great revenue generator. Well, the other thing we looked at, so what is the market for a facility like this? There actually is a pretty substantial market, and that's just not local, although we just looked at local by using freight analysis framework data, for example, from US DOT. We've also talked to all, well, not all, but a lot of the shippers in the area. They all are very supportive of this facility, very positive in the response. Obviously, they all, everybody likes shipping their goods cheaper, better, safer, quicker. It's hard to beat that. So we, we did that, and, and basically, here's what we come down to, is it is a very feasible project, it has local community support, it's got a lot of economic benefits to it. A facility like this can be phased, and I use this term scalability a lot, right? It's not like we'll build it, maybe they'll come. What we do is we, we build it, we design it and build it to the point where we know it's gonna make a return on our investment. When that opportunities increase, when business potential increases, we design and build more of it. It's a scalable kind of an opportunity. That's why you're gonna see this word phased. It's a phased approach to these kind of projects. We phased it based on the funding that, that we've identified to date, based on our market analysis, on that return and that size of facility. Any additional outside funding that comes in just makes the facility that more, that much more economically feasible, and larger, and more diverse. For example, one of the needs that were identified in the study is refrigerated warehousing. There is no refrigerated warehousing on the river in this part of the world. There's not. There's a desperate need for that. This is a perfect location for that. Perfect location. So that's just one way we could expand it. We talked about this port zone, a port zone would need a port commission. Don't let that scare you. It's just would be a subdivision of the city. It doesn't include any extra staff, per se, not any extra funding, per se. It's a legal entity that would help support getting grants. That's what it comes down to. Again, this is a huge economic development potential. Right now, we have been working with the, the state of Kansas to actually do a couple of what we call inland ports, or logistics parks. So kind of think of this like a logistic park, a rail-served logistic park that also has river access. And the economic development potential that everything goes, you know, it's multi-commodity, right? It's agricultural, it could be chemical, petrochemical, you name it, right? That's what flows up and down the river, potentially, and by rail here. So it's a very feasible project. We did a cost estimate to see what a break-even value was, you know, for a facility that would be about twenty-two to forty million dollars in total cost. Again, that's scalable, right? We did a break-even analysis based on twenty-five thousand containers per year, and we did this just on containers. This does not include any associated activity, like warehousing, logistics, supply chain, anything like that. Just on containers, you'd have to do about one-point-two-five million per year in revenues. That's a pretty, pretty easy number. That's a pretty easy achievable number. We talked about a little bit of the responsibilities from public partners and private partners. It really is a pretty even mix in terms of who gets benefits from what. Obviously, the, the private entities, cheaper shipping costs, right? That's really boils down to that. Bigger margin potential for them. From the private side, it's jobs, it's, it's community investments, community development, infrastructure improvements, invest, you know, investment opportunities that you don't have right now. A lot of upside, I think, from the community perspective for this. So again, we came up with recommendations. Number one, obviously, more in-depth financial pro forma needs to be developed. I'll tell you that we're working with Kent Corporation right now to, to, to take a drill, a deeper drill down on that. We have to look at a structure, like I said, this port zone or a commission that would be responsible for the, for the, for the port. We'd have to develop some goals, some master planning objectives that would be compatible with what your master plans are for the city development in the future years. We'd look at potential funding opportunities, and as we speak, the US Maritime Administration has opened right now, oh, it's called a Marine Highway Grant Application Process. And Merad, through that process, is, is already talked about this project. They're, they're way behind this project, they love this project, and they want, they want to submit, they want us to submit an application for funding. Basically, they say, hey, we gotta check here with your name on it, you gonna apply for it or not? They never say that. So they are very supportive of this project. Obviously, site development activities will take place once you have the funding wrapped up. Permitting, we all know permitting is not fun, it's not easy, but we permit these facilities every day. So that can definitely be done. And then it's coming up with, with a cost structure, your tariffs. We use the term tariff in the port world. And a tariff, basically, all that means is it's a list of scheduled fees that, that will be developed by the port operator. So that's basically it. It's been a fun study, it's very feasible. It, it, it's always, it's always satisfying to work on a project that you know can and will be built someday, and I, and I believe that this is the case with this one. So without taking any questions.
So I read your study a little bit, and your, your presentation shows the expansions and how you're gonna have building the facility to be adequate on the hundred acres. What about the actual fleeting of the barges and the location in the, in the waters? So if you hypothetically just mentioned twenty-five thousand to even break even, that's sixty-eight modular containers per day for three-hundred per day for 365 days. How would you actually have the capability to be able to be taxiing them to where we're at? Because in the picture that I saw, we already have a lot of our barges filled with corn now, and you said that we have, our channels are able to do the depth.
That's right.
So we're probably going to be carrying the 14-foot depths.
That's right.
Which I didn't know.
That's exactly right.
That means that you're probably, with that capabilities, that's a lot.
That's a lot. That's a lot. That's why, you know, that break-even point didn't include any other ancillary services. So what's going to happen is you build up that fleeting service and that process to be efficient, to move that many boxes. We want to look at other opportunities to have that revenue potential coming in.
Correct. But my question is, did you evaluate the expansion of our fleet?
That'll-
In other words, our parking lot for barges, do we have capabilities for that?
You do have the capability. We actually talked to the fleet operators, the fleeting operators, it's not in there, but we had talked to them, but that is in the next stage. That would be when we get into the conceptual design. We haven't done the conceptual design. That's just basically what we know will fit in the footprint. But no, that's a good comment, for sure. That is part of the next part of the study.
You mean they'd be actually fleeted in another-
You can't, because remember, it's a regional-
You're not going to have them stay there. Most of the times, with the way the tugboats work, is they get paid by the mileage, just like a trucker. So their job is to move the vehicles, pull them over, and then take them to an area to where they're going to be stored.
Right.
So the storage is going to be the big issue. We could physically be filling up that whole river air channel-
That's why-
-to be pretty full.
Three to barge, you basically park it in the bay area somewhere.
That's right. That's why it really is a regional play. It has to be a regional play. No, that's a very, very good comment.
So you said the other players, have you talked to other barge-moving companies as far as some of the other players that are normally in their Ingram or ADN or I?
We've talked to Ingram and ABM in particular.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
And they're on board with what we're-
Absolutely. Yeah. They're very excited about it as well. Again, it's more business opportunities for them.
The seasonal availability of barges going south is going to be a problem, isn't it?
The problem is empties. The challenge is getting empty containers-
Right.
...to the region.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That's the challenge, empty containers. It's not getting filled containers, right? It's, how do you keep that cycle of-
Well, I was thinking, the barges, the barges are going to be full of corn going south.
That's why-
Seasonally.
That's why you need, it's seasonally, right. That's a seasonal, that's exactly right.
And that's going to disrupt the flow of containers considerably, doesn't it?
It could be.
It could be.
Could be.
Will be.
Well, not only will be, but again, again, you have to have a supply of containers to begin with.
And not all barges will have containers.
Right.
We will continue to bulk load-
That's right.
...as we do today.
Well, that's right. Bulk load is, that's a good comment, too. There's bulk, liquid bulk, solid bulk.
These corn barges-
Absolutely. Going down to the Gulf.
Right.
Absolutely right. For export.
You said we were capable of doing the further depth ones, the 14-footers?
Yep.
In your experience, what is the real time you've had with EPA and the COR and all that nonsense? How long do they take?
It could be as quick as six months. It could be as long as five years.
Yes.
We've all been there.
We've never seen six months.
We've all been, well, it depends on relationships and the size of the project.
Yeah.
We've done it in three months.
I can't remember.
We've gotten 408 permits in three months, but it depends on the district.
Are we in the EPA region from Kansas City or Chicago?
In Iowa, you're five, region fives.
Currently, Kansas City.
Mm-hmm. So-
Do you have any friends down there?
Yes. Yes.
Well, that's your headquarters, isn't it, in HCR?
Yep. Well, Omaha is our headquarters.
But it used to be Kansas City.
Well, yes, yes. I'm in Kansas City. So yes, I have friends, some. No, it's, again, it's a feasible project, and that's what this study was, was really that very front-end study, kind of like, okay, is it worth future efforts and investments or not? And the answer is, yes, it is. But now we need to do the further drill-down studies.
EPA doesn't like congressional meddling, but just because they don't like it doesn't mean it doesn't work. Have you identified lots of different users, in other words, many, many congressional districts that will benefit from this?
The biggest, the biggest fan we have is Senator Ernst.
Well, you've got stuff coming from lots of different congressional districts, you've got 12 members of Congress.
That's right. That's right. And remember, we're also playing the other side of the river, too.
Right.
So-
Do you know, have you identified those?
We have. And when you're playing the grant game, you have to, right?
Yeah, right.
How big an approximate radius do you think, like, shippers or receivers, from how far around Musketeen? There are obviously not all in Musketeen.
The typical, typical radius for a facility like this, capture radius, is 300 miles. That's rule of thumb, 300 miles.
Is there business interruption insurance when one of the locks stops operating?
You can get a rider for that, yes. The costs.
Because that's distinct possibility.
Yes, it is. Well, it's going to be seasonal anyway, right? So-
Because that system is very old.
There was a, an article that was just published this afternoon talking about how Trump just, President Trump, visited one of the lock structures on the Ohio River that's reaching, well, it's way past its 50-year design life, that he's saying, basically, he wants to pump money into renovating all the lock and dam structures.
Well, yeah.
Of course, he wants to do everything, so. Yes, sir.
Just, I think I can answer that a little, a little bit more pointed. Our partner, Kent, deals with intermittent repairs and blockages of those locks and dams now with their, with their shipments by bulk down the river. And you can see delays as a result of that, but the fact that we're having the Canadian Pacific Railroad as a potential partner investor into this program allows us to maintain a flow of product around that scenario to our ports down, we get on these sea vessels. On the other question that you asked, which was a good one, was the shortage of barges and things like that. We met with Ingram, Ingram's the big barge company, the tow company, and they had assured us that they would supply us with, even in peak times, as many barges as we require for shipments. So we don't, we're not feeling uncomfortable with shortages on the barge side, but what Kevin said is the big challenge. The big challenge is getting the empty containers here so we can fill them again as part of our services.
Back up.
Yeah.
And how does one do that? How does one get containers back up?
Well, we'll work that out together. We haven't figured it out.
But that is where your railroad partner plays a big, big part in that.
Can CP double-stack them on their routes-
Yes, they can.
-to New Orleans or Houston?
No, no. What they do is, is from here, CP goes to Kansas City. They can double-stack to Kansas City, and then they interchange. So yes, from Kansas City to the Gulf can be double-stacked, but on a different carrier.
When you guys did your study, did you look at saying hypothetically, okay, now we're moving 68 loads per day, 25,000? Is there, and I'm just going to use an example, let's say St. Louis, are they capable, infrastructure-wise, of taking the new demands that we're supplying them now?
St. Louis is.
Okay.
Memphis is. As you go downriver-
Yeah.
-it gets better and better. I'll tell you that. Yeah, a lot of capacity.
Logistically, they would be able to take what we would be giving them.
Yes, sir, a lot of capacity downriver.
Okay.
What are EPA's big issues, other than inability to get anything done? You mean, we're just sticking poles into the river, right?
You know, it's not so much EPA, it's-
Or-
It's the environmental process altogether, and it's not-
Very familiar.
It's not fair to just stick EPA. It's the Corps of Engineers, it's USDOT, it's NEPA. You have to look at everything from air quality, water quality, wetlands, flood plains, threatened and endangered species, socioeconomics, environmental justice, land development. It's a process that has to be done, and so there's not one, any particular issue, it's just that combination that everything has to be looked at.
Yeah. I don't know if there was a typical stumbling block or just a general weight of the whole thing.
But you said this maritime agency is extremely supportive.
They are incredibly supportive. And here's a tip, if you want to do any kind of USDOT grant applications, put multimodal port in it. Because MARAD is by far the friendliest agent, agency to work with.
Okay, so you mentioned about the barges and the investments that we would have for rental charges. Normally, the barges from our, my familiarity with them is they cycle about 20 to 30 years before they start having to cycle out, and they don't consistently have the same amount of barges that are available one year to the next year. Did you guys study have that? So, I mean, one year we could be paying a very minimal fee for rent, and then the next year it could increase, and we don't see that until, because they're not, they're not increasingly making the barges every year consistently.
That's true.
Okay.
But you consider that into your tariff schedule.
Okay.
Right? So you pass that on.
So we, did the study check the cycling of when these barges are-
We haven't done that, to be, we've looked at it, but not as close as we need to. That's why we're doing the detailed pro forma right now.
And that would be on the port operator's side of the equation.
That's right.
Not on the community's side of the equation.
Well, I know, but this will be feasibility for us to even see if it-
Right, right.
To answer your question a little bit more succinctly, is that there are five different barge companies that will supply us barges, not going to just come from one.
Okay.
Okay, and they may be pushed up the river or pulled down the river by Ingram, but they're coming from other places. So it's not just one place to help, to help that circumstance.
Do you have any other cities, potentially, you could compare to what we would be building?
That's a very good question. Yes, and in fact, we just had a discussion today. Obviously, we work with a lot of these river port facilities. There's a similar operation, the Port of Southeast Missouri, in Scott City, Missouri, which is right next to Cape Girardeau, if you know where Cape Girardeau is, lower Mississippi. Very, very similar operation. It's what this facility could look like in three to five years.
And it has all three?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And there are several others, but that one is, I'm very, very involved with, so. In fact, what we're doing there is expanding that based on market demands for unit train business, which is something Canadian Pacific is interested here now, is handling unit, unit container trains. So the project there in Southeast Missouri is, even though they have an up-and-running port that's doing extremely well, and it's actually owned by the county, by the way, so it's different governance structures, they, they're actually building two loop railroad tracks to accommodate unit trains, which will, you know, almost triple their capacity for containers.
Is there any further discussions for this gentleman?
I could go on and ask him more questions, but I-
Senator Marwale, we're going to-
Does COR guarantee the 14-foot depth from here south, or is it, or whatever, or is it-
It's naturally here. That's the advantage of this site. Otherwise, you'd have to, you know, rely on them dredging and getting their funding for dredging.
Is it 12 or is it 14 now?
I thought you mentioned 14.
Yeah, well, 12 is the, if you get to the 14, you get wider ones, you get dipped, the ones-
That's right. It's what they call the deep well.
Down in Louisiana, but if you, normally, they'll have the 12s-
So these would be 12s, okay.
That's right.
And 13s.
Yeah.
And so then that'll also depend on what your demand is for ordering, when you start saying-
That's right.
-what type of barges you actually need. That changes your rent, that changes your cost.
It gets deeper for the south, it does.
Yeah. That's why I'm surprised that we're at 14 here.
Further questions?
Can't thank you enough. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
This time, I'd like to know, Councilman Tom, do you have any comments for tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Santos?
I just want to make a small comment. I know that I've had some complaints, concerns about the amount of construction going on in the downtown, and I just wanted to address that this is an investment that the city makes as far as into the downtown. There are challenges with businesses not being able to maintain their current mode of operation, but those are sacrifices that we understand that had to be taken. We cannot continue to not invest in our community and invest in those streets, and this is a point of time that we have to do it. This is the only time you can do it during the summer, so I appreciate the people's patience and the calls that I've gotten in regards to that, and I just want to communicate that, you know, hopefully, we'll get through this phase and we'll get those streets up and going as soon as we can. That's all I have.
When the city did receive some of these comments, within 24, 48 hours, that they reacted to your comments, we're just about ready to be able to explain to you some of the new things that may be happening downtown, but needs to be talked about just a tad bit For myself, I'd like to say thank you for the people that are working on a trail project. Maginnan's Trail Project is going to start on the 14th, excuse me, it started on the 12th of August. Excuse me, June, excuse me, and it should be completed by the end of October. It's starting at Kenstein Park, going all the way down to the-
Deep Lake.
Blue Goons.
The Bits.
Yes. Deep Lake Park.
Deep Lake Park. Nothing, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Nothing, thank you.
I sort of known out earlier today, just for the public's information, I guess, as well, we've had a number of complaints come in on Dish One folks going around town. If you get those complaints, send them my way. I've suspended their license at this point in time. They're certainly able to appeal that, so they should not be on the street at this point in time. If you get those complaints, please forward them to me, and they can certainly appeal that suspension, but based on the number of complaints that we've had, and the police department has had, we've suspended their license at this point in time, so.
So that's Dish One?
Dish One, yes.
Dish One.
The AEG guys.
Frank, do you have anything else?
You did a great job. It's covered.
Yes, please.
I'll add one thing. David, I think you made a good choice. There's a lot of meat in here, and HTR's done a good job for you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
I adjourn.